Where did you pull that out back?
Maybe it was fifty, someone told me it was fifty p.
We'll get Liz.
Okay, he's ready in ten years.
Welcome everyone, thank you for joining us this evening. Today is November 11th. This is Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education meeting. And before I ask for the approval of the agenda, I wanted to welcome Liz Driscoll, who's the band director at McKinley Middle School. And Liz, if you wouldn't mind going to our podium and introducing your students and the performance that you had out in our foyer this evening.
Sure, thank you. My name is Liz Driscoll and I'm the band director at McKinley Middle School. And today, we have our McKinley eighth grade quartet performing. They are Caleb Kleeman and Emma Witt, Austin Wake and Marcellus Gillis. And so they started their day at Hy-Vee this morning, giving back to the community for the Veterans Day breakfast there, and we were delighted to play today. So thank you for inviting us.
Thank you so much for coming, that was so enjoyable. You're all very talented students, thank you.[134.16][134.16](APPLAUSE). And again, before I ask for the approval of the agenda, this is Veterans Day. And as I look out into our group today, are there any veterans? And if there are, could you please stand to be recognized? On behalf of our board and executive staff, we thank you for your service. We know how important it is for you to give up your time and your energy. And it's just been a great day. And as I said to someone else in the audience, over the years, I've seen Veterans Day participation and appreciation and gratitude expressed more and more, and it's so important. So thank you very much for your service. Now, I will go ahead, and Dave, is there anything that we're changing in the agenda that we see before us tonight?
Yes, if it pleases the board. There are two items. First, the bus tabulation that was published has been pulled from the final recommended agenda. We had some questions brought up about that tabulation that we need further clarification on. So Mr. Graham is seeking that clarification, and we'll bring that tabulation back to you. And second, under board governance, the resolution for cell tower should be moved up under public hearings, as it is a tabled action and should be considered first in the agenda order. So with those recommendations would make the recommendation, or those changes would make the recommendation, the board approve the modified agenda.
Can I have a motion to approve the modified agenda, Keith?
Don't move.
Second, please. This is roll call action. Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Wester?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Laverty?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
So next, we will go right into the resolution, asking for the approval of cell tower at Johnson Elementary School. Dave, did you want to address the board regarding that resolution?
Yes. We moved this up because, under procedure, we have had a public announcement of a public hearing, we have had a public hearing, and the issue was tabled. Under the procedural rules, a tabled motion must come back to the board at its next regularly scheduled session, and must come back in the order in which it was originally presented or recommended. That said, we have had a public presentation of material last Tuesday evening, a week ago tomorrow, at Johnson Elementary. And we have received written communication from esteemed citizens in the community. And it is now my opinion that this issue should not go forward. And it's really up to the board how you wish to do that. You could pull it from the agenda, which would be my recommendation, and just not take action on it. Or you could, because it is on the agenda as a recommendation, you could have a motion, or you don't need a motion, it's already stated as a recommendation, you could have a vote and see where the votes are on the board to either approve or not approve it.
Okay. Board's pleasure, vote, or do you want to just go ahead and remove it from the agenda for consideration?
I'd like it removed.
Okay.
I'd like it removed.
Okay. So I have a consensus that we'll go ahead and remove it from the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we do have, we have two public hearings regarding HVAC replacement Phase Two at Washington High School. I'm going to go ahead and combine that with the second one, which is asbestos abatement for HVAC replacement Phase Two at Washington High School. Laurel, have we received any written comments or communications regarding these? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this issue at this time, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Next is superintendent reports and board reports.
Good evening. I'm pleased to share the first Innovation Learning Project awards have been announced by the district. These were identified through a process that invites our staff to request technology-related resources for creative learning environments. The proposals were reviewed by a committee that included students, community members, and staff. The first five awards were announced last week and are posted on the district's homepage. Congratulations to the teachers and staff involved. The next round of these Innovative Learning Project awards will be in January. And these awards are being funded by the Technology Silo Dollars. We're very pleased to have these projects off the ground. Next, I want to have the community be aware of the updated Strategic Goals brochure that is now posted on the website. This document provides data related to student performance and academics and achievement, community involvement, student social, emotional, behavioral development, fiscal integrity, and workforce development. You may also call the Community Relations Office to request a printed copy. Third, I'm sure most of you have received the first of a series of postcards we are mailing to celebrate student success in the district. This is part of our awareness initiative to reach a broad community audience. The postcard outreach was modeled after a similar campaign used in an Indiana school district. That district received a lot of positive feedback from the student success story outreach. Our mailing goes to Lynn County households with the intention of reaching the broadest possible audience with the stories of our outstanding high school seniors. The fourth card will celebrate the success of a preschool family. All of these success cards are posted on the website. It's a great project, and we need to be sure to get our positive message out to all of the citizens of Lynn County, whether you have children in the district or any other district. Next, the Magnet School Conversation is continuing. Two community meetings have been held so far. The next meeting is this Thursday night, November 14th, at the IBEW Hall. The meetings are led by Associate Superintendent Dr. Trace Pickering. They begin at 6:30 PM. This is a wonderful opportunity to learn more about this innovative program option, and the community meetings will continue weekly into December. You can find a complete list of times and dates and locations on the website. As part of this conversation, our Board of Education is planning a joint meeting with the Kirkwood Community College Board of Trustees on Thursday, January 9th, for a presentation and a facilitated discussion about magnet schools and other innovations that the Community College and the district can jointly undertake. That meeting will be held at Kirkwood after their regular January meeting on the 9th, and we anticipate that workshop to begin at 6:30. And finally, the annual district recognition of school and community partnerships will be held Wednesday, November 13th, here at the ELSC. This event is hosted by the Community Relations Department. We'll celebrate more than 70 area businesses and organizations for their support of our schools. The reception begins at 4:30 with the program at 5:00. I look forward to congratulating and thanking all of these groups for their generous support of the educational community.
Thank you. Board reports. Gary.
Yes, I'm pleased to announce that we have some dates for some upcoming chalk talks, continuing what we started last year. The next one will be this Saturday, November 16th, at the First Avenue Hy-Vee, from 9:00 to 10:30. We'll have another one scheduled on January 18th, and a third on March 15th. They will all be at Hy-Vee's, the other, the last two sites to be determined in going with those dates. If anyone else on the board is interested in attending, we can have up to three members present, so just contact Mary if you're interested.
Thank you. Other reports or comments? I have a few. I did have at your, unfortunately for you, I had some time to read over the weekend, and I decided to share some of my reading material with you. The first is "A New Vision for Accountability." It relates specifically to assessments related to the Common Core. The second one is "Getting Better Media Coverage." And the third is, it's written by Tom Jensen, it's entitled "The Last Word," and it talks about school choice. And I believe this session, our governor will be looking at vouchers. So I hope that all of you read about that and become informed so that you can have some good dialogue with our legislators. And I'll share these things with you too as well, so that we're all on the same page. Okay. Next, you know that we do have the Iowa Association of School Board Conference coming up this November, excuse me, in a couple of weeks. Please let Laurel know of your intent to go, and if you need to make any, if she needs to make any reservations, please let her know that as well. And Keith, did you have anything to add about the convention?
No, not really. I mean, I think it's going to be another good one.
So we encourage board participation as much as you can allow in your schedule. Okay, next, communications, delegations, and petition. This is an opportunity for our community to address our board. It's not an opportunity for dialogue, but we will take your comments for up to five minutes. So I do have Sharon Collins. Can you please step up to the podium and state your name and address for our record? And Laurel will signal you when your five minutes is up. That's Laurel.
Hi, I'm Sharon Collins. I'm a pediatrician, and my address is 411 10th Street, Southeast Cedar Rapids. And I came here to try to convince you not to put the cell phone tower on Johnson Elementary. And I am thrilled, but not totally surprised, because I believe that you all have children's best interest in mind. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Next, I have Justin Wasson. And again, Justin, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name's Justin Wasson, 1621 Washington Avenue, Southeast Cedar Rapids. I actually live a block from Johnson School, it was why I was originally here. If you don't mind, I want to just digress for a minute. I'll make it very brief, since the cell tower's not an issue anymore. We are having a neighborhood meeting. One of the big things in our neighborhood is Johnson School and McKinley School. Our neighborhood meeting's tomorrow, starts at 6:00, sorry, 6:00 PM. We're having a chip-free chili supper. And we would really appreciate if some of the board members on the school board would come out and tell us what's going on in the school district, Johnson in particular. I just got married a couple of weeks ago, and the next step after marriage, obviously, is kids.[928.43][928.43](LAUGHING). That's the plan. And, and we want to stay in the neighborhood. This neighborhood is very important to us, and the president of the Neighborhood Association, me and my wife love it down there. And I'll tell you what, if you want to keep us down there, Johnson has to be a top school. And I've seen some of the product that Johnson's pushed out, and I'm pretty impressed with some of those students. I've got some good friends in the neighborhood that have nothing but positive things to say. And you can be rest assured that in a couple of years, when my kids are attending Johnson, you'll probably be seeing my face a little more. But I hope to see some of you tomorrow, 6:00 PM, free chili, and then we have a silent auction to help fund our association. Thanks for your time.
Just for clarification, where will this meeting be held?
The Paul Engel Center.
Okay, thank you.
The address is 1600 4th Avenue Southeast. Thank you.
Okay, next, I have Larry Winkowski.
Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Morrell Road, Northeast. First of all, need to compliment Dr. Pickering for his efforts with the magnet schools and using the Engage CR to foster questions, encouraging people to ask questions, and his ability to get back with answers right away. You know, even though it's probably not the ideal tool to use for that, but he's not spending any more money, and so he's using what he has and currently has. One other thing with the Engage CR, we keep changing the status of projects, but one thing that doesn't exist with them, as we change the status, is a due date. So if we're changing the status of that, we're looking into something, it'd be nice to know, you know, roughly, when's this going to happen? You know, three months out, six months, or something like that. There's, with the meeting agenda, there has been a lot of improvements over the last year, but when it comes to presentations, I think it's really important that these are part of posting in advance and part of the agenda. And a good example is tonight's presentations on the enrollment. And there's a couple of questions I might have, like to ask, but I'm not sure if this is part of the agenda, the presentation or not. So I'm going to ask these things anyway. One of them has to do with, from last year to this year, how many of the students who were at Polk originally permitted into another school district, or into a private school? Basically, how many did we leave from that process? And also, for this year, you know, how many students have we lost from the, for the same reason? You know, I'd like to have thought, after one year, that that process would have concluded, but, you know, is there still people who are having issues adjusting and that? And, you know, because I don't want to see anybody leave this district. It costs us too much money. Any other comment I'd like to say tonight is, yeah, I know I brought this up a year ago, I talked to Mrs. Day about it, about saying a pledge of allegiance at the beginning of a board meeting, and she said, as long as she was here, you know, it's never been done. But I think it's a practice we should start doing. You know, we should be happy that here in America, we get to actually choose whether or not we have, can even consider magnet schools and that. And, you know, I think, you know, we make it a requirement for all of our students and that. So, you know, there's nothing that's going to hurt us to spend 30 seconds, you know, twice a month to do that. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to turn to our consent agenda, and I'm going to change things up a little bit. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second, and then a discussion. So we already know that it is, we've polled BA 14141. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd move that we can approve the consent agenda.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on any items in the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just had a question about the number and variety of agreements we have to support, to support our students that, to support schools, the supplemental education schools, sorry, supplemental education services. Yeah, Val, this question's for you. I just wondered if you could maybe highlight the, I don't have any issues with it, I just feel like I need just want a little bit better understanding of what we're trying to do. There's like four, five of them, I think.
Right. Supplemental educational services are required of our sign-in two schools and beyond, so we actually have nine schools that need to provide supplemental educational services based on the Schools in Need of Assistance guidelines from the state. And then the second piece to that would be, the state also provides us with a list of qualified providers that are approved by the state. So these on the, on the agenda today are certainly ones that have been, met the state criteria. We then did a provider fair, where families could hear from some of these people, actually ask some questions, those kinds of things. And they could also get more information pamphlets, things like that. And they then made a choice, and these were some of them. We will have some additional that will come in December. We're having two enrollment periods this year. We did a fall one, and then we're going to do one in January as well, so there'll be more consent items for that as well. And the state tells us how much money we have to allocate to those supplemental educational services out of our sign-up funds that we receive.
And then the families choose which of these different companies they want their children to work with?
Yes, based on if they're looking for reading, math, or maybe both. And so some of the providers provide just reading, some provide math, and some provide both.
And does that education take care, take place at the school buildings?
No. Some do, Sylvan would be an example of that. Some of them, though, they also go into Sylvan. We also have some online ones that happen that provide either an access to a program that the children actually get onto the computer and do some things. There also are a few providers that actually provide a short-term computer to the families to do the, that same kind of service.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Gary?
Wonder if I could get a little bit more explanation on BA 14149, the Safari Montage program?
Thanks, Gary, for asking. Safari Montage is a program that will allow our staff to have immediate access to job-embedded professional development. Let me give you an example. Let's say I met with my professional learning community team at my school. We gave a common formative assessment, and when we examined those results, we discovered we had a group of students who had mastered over a period of time that particular standard. We wanted something to, we wanted strategies to extend their learning while we were working with students who had not yet mastered the standard. And we remembered that maybe last year, in a district PLC team, teacher had used a couple of strategies that were very successful. We don't have a way currently to capture that and have it immediate at the hands, tips of our teachers. Safari Montage will allow us to do that. We'll be able to match strategies to Iowa Core standards that are, have been successful in the classrooms, are research-based. We can decide as a team or an individual teacher. We can do that for students who are having difficulty, those that are right on, those that are, that we want to push up while we're working with other students. So it's just a, it's a good hands-on way for us to be able to provide research-based quality resources, strategies that will help extend that learning for our students and have it be immediate. We don't have to make a phone call, we don't have to go search, it'll just be right there.
Thank you. It sounds like it will be a real plus.
We're real excited.
Support for the, for the teachers. Looking forward to after it's been in use, maybe a report back.
Oh, I'd love to, yes. Yes, we'll do that.
See how it's going. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did visit the website, you should look at it. It's really an exciting tool, so I'm glad to see us adopt that. Thank you. Thank you, Becky.
Thanks.
Any other discussion, any other items? If not, this is a roll call action due to the personnel report. Director Wester?
Aye.
Director Humpel?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Laverty?
Aye.
Director Endel?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
President Meister?
Aye. Next is board governance, I'll turn this over to Dave and Laurel to talk about policy manual review and revisions.
Thank you for allowing us to talk about the regulation for your review this evening. The policy, excuse me, the regulation on public participation was after the president of the board, Mr. Bob, so we did, there was a slight revision, and so we made that change. We'll be back for your review.
Policy 508, 509, and 510 are the voluntary retirement incentive programs. These are the annual policies that come for you, for review. This is the first read, and we will bring those back on December 9th for final approval. And then we have a regulation and procedure on the voluntary transfers to promote inclusive schools and the guidelines. If you have any questions, we would be happy to visit with you about them.
Questions or comments? John?
So, Jill, just a question about the wellness benefit calculation chart. If I read correctly, and here, there's something that will be forthcoming on that or negotiated. Can you explain that?
I don't think your mic's on.
I don't think you're on.
I'll give you a new mic.
In, in some of the meet and confer agreements and one of the collective bargaining agreements, the wellness incentive is embedded into the collective bargaining language. And so in order to make a change in how we calculate that, we would have to address that in bargaining for some changes. And so we will be doing that, and I have discussed that with the association. We're not looking for a material change, just a different way to calculate it that makes sense with the new system, HRIS system.
Thank you.
Could you just comment generally on the differences between last year's offering and this year's offering for retirement?
Other than trying to renegotiate how we calculate that incentive, we're not recommending any changes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Gary?
The thinking about, it looks like removing regulations 602.8 and 602.8A.
I can address that. There was, in order to continue with those type of policies, they'd have to be redeveloped and get approval from the Department of Education. These are policies that are antiquated to some extent and need to be redrafted.
Okay, so the intent is that we'll see a revision of these?
I think it will be a discussion.
A discussion of the board review. Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll turn it over to Carla to talk about 2013 and 2014 enrollment.
At your place, you have some documents.
I want to share a little bit with you about our enrollment for the 1314 school year. And I think I can make this work. Point backwards. I want to talk about two sets of numbers. The first set is the official head count. And what is included in official head count is, basically, that's all of the students that are in full-time attendance in our buildings. So this does not include any students who are dual-enrolled, or that we share, or through our homeschool assistance program, because we don't get full-time funding for those students. So the first charts I'm going to show you are just the official head count. This is longitudinally, and I've just showed you, over the past five years, our enrollment trends have gone from, we've had 16,304 students in 2009, and we dipped, dipped, dipped a little bit, and then we are headed in the right direction. little bit, and then we are headed in the right direction for this year. So, our official head count increased by 109 students from last year. So, that's exciting.
Yep, but we just say one data point doesn't make a trend. We are all ecstatic that the data is indicating more students.
Yeah, so, and how that breaks out by level is, excuse me, the green is the elementary, which is AK to five, and you can see the difference between 2012 and 2013. The blue is the middle school level, and then the yellow is the students at the high school level. So, you can kind of see, we gained a few students at the elementary and at the high school level, lost a few at the middle school level, and that, the difference between those numbers is that 109 students. Our, excuse me, free introduced lunch percentages, based on our official head count, last year, the orange line that you see there is at the district. We were at 48% last year, this year we're at about 46%. And then, the second set of numbers that I want to talk about is certified enrollment. So, these numbers include every student that we serve in some capacity in the district. So, for example, this includes our homeschool assistance program students. They may come for an enrichment class once a month or whatever, but we do serve them. So, we wanted to, so, we wanted to include them. Those numbers, we actually increased 209 students. So, that's a little bit different. They're not full-time in our buildings, but we serve them. So, that number went up as well. And you can see that, I didn't do that. The trend there was from, originally, if we go back to the last slide, we had lost about, I think it was, yeah, we were down 124 students from 11 to 12, and then we went up from 12 to 13, 209 students. So, that's moving in the right direction as well.
I, I think that it's always important to quantify numbers. These are head count numbers, these are persons in seats, as opposed to weighted enrollments. And in the state of Iowa, we get different waitings for different kinds of students in enrollment. So, our actual weighted enrollment that you'll see that will be somewhat higher than these numbers, because these numbers don't take into account the waitings.
Alan?
Which, which number do we use again for funding, as far as from the state?
Certified enrollment is what's used for funding, which is this slide right here.
Thank you.
How happy are we? Turning the corner.
Very, very happy.
Our population study that we had done, you know, a couple of years ago, did indicate that this would be at least a leveling off, so this is, this is good news. And although it was, as you said, Dr. Benson, one data point, but from our previous study, it looks like that this should continue. Good news.
That's a good point, Director Anne Holtz. Our, our previous study had us basically at our low point this year, and then starting to climb out of it. And I'm really excited about this number, because I think it shows some of the effort of our city, our city leadership and flood recovery initiatives, and the core neighborhood projects, the reinvestment in housing that's going on by block-by-block and others in the community. So, I'm really excited about this, because I think it shows a lot of hard work. Experts that we consulted on flood recover say that it's a 10-year minimum kind of process. Well, we're five years in, post-flood, and we're starting to see a strong recovery, not only within our business community and business activity, but now in our enrollment numbers. So, I'm very pleased with these numbers and think that this is a, an indication of better things to come.
I do too. Okay, thank you. And Carla, I'll just keep you up there to talk about our next topic, which is the annual progress report.
Yep. The annual progress report is a report that's submitted on an annual basis to the Department of Education as a piece of what's called the C Plan or the Consolidated Plan. And what it does is it monitors progress over time in reading, math, and science, basically is what it does. So, this is a report on what was written actually last year during the 12-13 school year, and then we submitted that data to the department in mid-September of this year. Our goals that were written last year for this year was, and it was the same goal in reading, math, and science, it was attain one year of growth using Iowa assessments on grade equivalencies. So, one year in reading, one year in math, and then one year in science. So, those were the goals we submitted to the Department of Ed, and then this is our progress on those goals. So, we looked at cohort data, so students from second grade to third grade, third grade to fourth grade is how that goal was written last year. And just did the, it's the average grade equivalent of the standard scores, what it is, but, so if we look at second to third, for example, in 2011, those students were at third grade, second month is what the 3.2 means. We test in the eighth month. So, we, so we would have, if they were just right on grade level, that would read 2.8. So, they were above grade level to begin with, so we still want to make a year's growth from where they're at. And if we look at then, from 12-13, they were, we would have expected them, if they were right on grade level, to be 3.8, but they were at 4.0. So, and that's how all of those are written. So, from third to fourth, we started at fourth grade first month, ended at fifth grade third month. And then, that was for reading. If we look at our math progress, again, the goal was written exactly the same way. We're looking from third grade, or second to third, third to fourth, and so on, started at third grade first month, ended at fourth grade first month. So, a full year's growth there, even though we started above the 2.8 that you might, would be considered grade level. And our science progress. And another piece of what is in the annual progress report is average daily attendance for K-8. That's one of the, those other indicators that the DE measures. The blue line is the elementary, and we're at about 95% attendance, and the green line is the middle school, and that, again, was about 95 attendant, rate attendance, and that has held consistent over the years. So. This slide is graduation rate, and graduation rate is figured, interestingly, in the state of Iowa, it's a pretty complicated formula, actually. I brought it if you want it, so, because I couldn't remember it. If we look at the, the green line first, is what I would like you to look at first. That's actually a four-year graduation rate. So, that's taking, basically, our kids graduating in four years, so starting as freshmen to seniors with all the pluses and minuses figured into the formula. So, our graduation rate has increased, I think it's like 82.8%, so from 80.93 when that, this calculation was started, this formula. The blue line is a five-year graduation rate. So, a student who needs more time or chooses to take more time, didn't have enough credits, whatever it may be, maybe they have an IEP, our graduation rate in that five-year band is higher yet, and it's 86.03% of our students graduate. And questions? Yeah, John?
So, it looks to me like we continue to have some issues with our transitions from elementary into middle school with math and reading. And we've talked about this again since I've been on the board, and I know there's been some work that's been done, but we're not making the progress, at least in my mind. There's still some issues there. Science seems to be doing okay.
Yeah.
At least in this report. So, what more can we do? Are there some things for summer programs? Are, are there more interventions? Are there expectations at home that need to be put in place? What, what more can we do as a board to support the teaching staff, the faculty, administrators, and getting students not to have such a dip going from elementary into middle school?
I think some of what I expect to make a difference as we move forward is our full implementation of the Iowa Core K-12, and getting just a really tightly-aligned curriculum. I think that will make a difference, I'm planning for that to make a difference in some of those numbers as we move forward into the future. And then, we're also doing curriculum work in all of those areas with the Core and identifying standards, and trying to place those standards into courses so that we're, there's not any curricular holes. Because what we don't want to happen is as they go from, you know, one teacher at elementary to several or whatever, we want to make sure that curriculum is just as aligned as humanly possible to the Core. So, I think that will make a difference, you know, as we constantly look at materials we use as well.
Okay.
Along that line, do we know, is, are we unique in this, in this gap?
The fifth, sixth dip.
Right, or do, how do the other metro schools prevail?
We are not unique in the gap. When I look at our numbers in comparison to the state or the AEA, there are gaps at that middle school level across the board. That's not uncommon, but we certainly want to continue to work to erase those gaps.
Certainly, we, we want to acknowledge that, Director Anne Holtz, but at the same time, at our recent SAI meetings, we had a presentation by Iowa Testing Service, and across the state, we acknowledged that that dip existed, and they acknowledged their understanding that that is occurring. And that will be addressed in a re norming of the next round of testing. So, we hope that there's a, maybe a statistical anomaly that's taking place that we can also point to, but I don't want to use that as an excuse. We still need to address that issue. And I believe our middle schools have, have been working to elevate expectations and outcomes for kids. Val, do you have any comment on that?
Well, I, as we've been talking, in many of the work pieces that were started last year are continuing, we have a conversation about what happens as we look at that data, that we're also looking at, how are we responding if they're not successful? Do we have a response to that intervention, that RTI model? And looking at, if we know in, as they come to us from fifth grade that they're struggling, can we address that and get to greater gains for those kids as well? There are some summer things that do happen. We identify some kids in the summer, or actually in the spring in fifth grade, that would benefit from what we call the sixth-grade academy, that happens in the summer. It, that varies by building as to how, how many kids attend, based on attendance. It certainly is a voluntary thing, we can't force them to come, but we've had some great staff in the buildings really try to go out and get those kids and say, please come, because that does help them transition as well, because that's another piece to this as well.
I would just add that we're seeing very good results with those students that do participate in that transition plan over the summer and that attend the summer programming that is involved from elementary to middle school. We have quite a bit of data to show that those students are achieving at, at higher levels or seeing success at the middle school level. I look down to Paul Hayes, who is the keeper of all that information, but we feel that that is a high-quality program, and we'll continue to do that each year for those students as they transition into middle school.
Just a further comment, I sense it seems to expand beyond just Cedar Rapids. I, I would think that there could be alignment with the test and what's actually being taught. I know, I firmly believe that our kids are still learning, and I'm not going to get too excited, I guess, about a test score that could have some reliability concerns along with it, so.
Yeah, Alan?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Alan?
Couple of questions. I know the city PTA was trying to work with the school district last year. Did that, Laurel, did that, is that still going, or Val, is, where they were trying to get this parent university going, or whatever they called it, or they tried to get the parents? And one of the topics I know was that transition between fifth and sixth and, and eighth and ninth.
There were three sessions for parent university last year that our city PTA hosted, and the first one was about just connecting that homeschool partnership and committing to and fostering the partnership between home and school. The research would indicate that that does, it certainly enhances students' performance in school. So, that was the first one that was hosted in the fall, and we didn't have a really good turnout at that session. Second session was about how to communicate and how to work with parent-teacher conferences, how to gather information at parent-teacher conferences, and how to make that connection. And we had a little bit more attendance at that meeting. It was district-wide, and we probably had maybe 20 or so folks come to that one. The last one that was focused on that transition between elementary and middle school was very well-attended. It was in our Cedar Room, which holds, and we had it divided in half. We wish we wouldn't have, we wish we would have had the whole thing. There was over 120 or 130 students and parents there. So, again, we feel that that is a high priority for us again, and yes, we will work together with the city PTA to host that event and continue to support that event. It was, it was a great, a great evening of learning for the kids and for the parents, I think, that attended.
Thank you. I have a question for Carla, real quick. On this graduation rate, I love the idea of trending, you know? So, I know right now, we cannot use this data for very long, right? In other words, 2009 was when we transitioned over that new calculation.
2009, yes.
So, I've always had this vision that we would just show a trend. I know we cannot, with all the variables out there, and Dr. Benson explained this to me before, that there's no way you can set a goal of 90% graduation rate. You've got to basically watch the trends, and this affects that, and so on. But I just want to know if you had any, anything that you've observed in your position that is affecting the graduation rate, or would, would improve the graduation rate? I mean, where, where do these kids end up at, the 18% that we lose track of? I don't, is there a way to track them down?
We try to track as many kids as we possibly can. It can include kids that if they leave our district, for example, and they don't, no one requests any records or anything like that, we have to kind of assume them as a dropout. And so, that impacts our graduation rate. You know, I think what Mary Ellen Vell spoke to with the response to intervention or providing those academic supports for kids, I think that's going to be a big key in increasing graduation rates as well. I, I think this is, our numbers are, look good in comparison to the state numbers, and I think it's just a challenge across the state of making sure, getting kids to stay in school as, and not losing them between the cracks.
Thank you, and I had a third question, of course. I always have three. The third one is ACT scores.
Yes.
Were very high, were like 25, average.
Yes.
And, and we always do real well at that, and I just wondered, we got predicting now 27, 28 as an average with these upticks and all these different scores, as these kids go through?
Of course. I, I would like to say yes, but, you know, I don't know.
Good, thank you.
But not all of our students take ACTs, as do Iowa assessments, so.
I'm following up on Alan's question about the dropout rate.
Mm-hmm.
18%. These young people are not going to be able to get a job in our market today. So, I find that extremely alarming, always have had, and I'm wondering what more we have to do to help these students stay in school. I know we've had dropout prevention programs.
Right.
I'd like to hear more about this later, because their lives are going to be extremely difficult. So, that's verbally, other than writing it down, I think this is, is a very important situation. And to me, it's too late when they walk into the counselor and say, hey, I'm going to drop out, or they don't walk in at all, you know? We need to get more energetic about having the programs and letting students know about the great programs that we have, so that we can keep them in school. I would like to see over 90% graduation. I think that it's got to happen.
I think we would too. I would simply say that we're moving towards an issue of breaking down the down the one-size-fits-all system.
Yes.
And going to a more of a choice system. I'm excited about the big project that we're undertaking this year to see how that helps us personalize education to some students. So I, I think all of this initiative, the work that Paul Hayes did with the Kaizen event a couple of years ago on attendance, I believe it was the Des Moines Register, had a big article on the effects of attendance and some, some relative comparisons. And we came out pretty well on that. But still, we have our own non-attenders. And that's a big part of the student intervention program now for us that Paul has presented to the board. We find the non-attenders are really the most likely dropouts. And so that's, that's an issue. So all of these things, I don't believe there's a silver bullet that says if you just do this. This is hard work. It's work that has to be done across the board. And I believe the district is, is well on, on our way to offering choice, to working on attendance issues. And the, Paul, I'm search, I'm, I'm searching for the name of the system that we designed on the interventions.
Learning Supports Database.
Learning Supports Database, thank you. I was having a more-than-senior moment on that, trying to find that one out. But that's really good work, and I think it'll pay dividends over time.
I would just add to that, that that Learning Supports Database provides for us a great deal of information of those at-risk indicators that are indicators for a student to drop out. And that early identification process that we can use with the Learning Supports Database, which Candy and Paul, Candy Lynch and Paul Hayes did present to us. So we can look at attendance. And if attendance is a problem, definitely, we need the kids there. We also look at other variables, such as if they're getting Ds or Fs in a course. We can look at that data. We can look at the data on Iowa assessments to determine if they are underperforming in the Iowa assessments. So if they're struggling in the classroom, would that, would that indicate that there are problems? One of the things, it's part of our, one of our district goals for this year is that each school in our district is going to identify a pyramid of supports. We call that, all of our acronyms, that's the RTI, Response to Intervention Pyramid. And within that pyramid, we identify ways that we can reach. So what are we going to do for those kids that are not attending? What are we going to go do for the students that are underperforming on assessments? What are we going to do for those students who are not connected to school and not involved in extracurricular activities? So there's all those different things that we can look at. And again, there's, there's all those variables. The other thing that we are becoming better at doing is looking at, is the student not being successful in school because they're an intentional non-learner? Meaning, they either are not there because they're not attending school, or they're not trying when they're there? They're not putting their best effort forward? So we have the intentional non-learners that you would address in a different manner than a student that was at school, trying very hard and underachieving. So I think we're learning more and more about how to address those two different types of student, of learners in our classrooms, and providing professional learning for our teachers to help address those issues as well. Because in a classroom of 24 students, you could have several different types of learners in that classroom. So becoming, well, better adept at addressing those issues and having the resource, having the data at our fingertips is a real plus for us with that Learning Supports Database. Keith, it's something that we talk about all the time, because, because we know if students aren't ready to learn, when they come to school, they aren't going to learn. So it's, it is, it's a big issue for us as well.
As we all know, their chances of poverty are very high if they drop out. And so, you know, whatever we can do now, and what opportunities are out there too? If a student drops out a month, six months later, or whatever, you know, they realize they made a mistake of coming back in. And can we provide for that now, very effectively?
Yes. Yes, we can. And I, I probably would refer to Paul to talk a little bit more regarding that. And I'll pass the microphone down.
The Learning Supports teams in our buildings are addressing that by looking at how do you re-engage students? And there, there are staff at, like, Metro High School who will actually go out and, and seek out students and, you know, offer things like the, the GRE, or the, you know, the adult diploma through Kirkwood, and different programs that way so that they are re-engaged in that learning, tracking their credits, and taking a look at what, how, how far behind are they, or how close are they to, to graduation, and working with them and the family to kind of fill that gap. So all of our high schools have that, that re-engagement in mind at their Learning Supports meetings for those students who they come across who have just kind of disappeared.
Thank you, Keith.
Yep.
The state doesn't recognize, although we're tracking it, the five-year graduation rate. Is that correct?
The state does.
The state does?
Yep.
Okay.
I think what's reported more often is the four-year rate.
Is the four-year. I've heard that there's some inherent problems with how the state tracks those, that graduation rate. And it might be something that we need to work on legislatively. That, well, I'm glad to see that they do count the five-year. I wasn't aware that, or at least were able to indicate that, because we are showing almost 4.5% of kids that were getting back, that maybe have dropped out, that are coming back that fifth year.
Well, and they may not have dropped out, but they may have an IEP that allows them to finish in five, you know, because we will serve them to 21.
Correct.
So they may not have left our system at all, but that may be part of their transition.
We know that all kids don't learn at the same rate.
Right.
And so the important thing, as Keith mentioned, is that they do graduate and they get that diploma.
Yes.
So I think that's good. I think we, we do need to see if we can address legislatively some changes, because I think there are, there are some problems.
Do you want me to share the formula? I mean, would you like to know the formula?
Is it?
It's, they look at first-time ninth-grade students who graduate with their class. They add that to transfer-in grads. And they add that to early grads from a later class. And they add IEP grads from earlier cohorts. And then they divide that by first-time ninth-grade students added to transfer-in, added to transfer-out, added to early grads, added to IEP grads, added to early-out grads, and added to IEP still enrolled. So the first four numbers I gave you are added together, divided by the latter six, added together.
I don't understand why you needed that sheet to tell us the formula.
And I made it big, so I could see it too.
And we can use the triathlon though.
It is tracked through the state, actually.
Okay. Does student ID number help with the load?
Yes. So the data that I shared actually came from the Department of Ed.
Right. And one of the fallacies is the issue of state discrete numbers. The same student could have a state discrete number in Illinois, Iowa, Missouri, and Wisconsin over their five-year, four-year matriculation through high school. And it, it gets a little dicey sometimes, particularly students that are fairly young in the, in the high school experience. Where they go, and then we never hear, we're pretty sure they've landed someplace, but we never hear. Well, those students stay on our list forever, because we never heard.
Other comments or questions?
I was just thinking about what the district's done, since I've been on here for two years. They've been, introduced this Canvas system as far as delivering content. And I, again, there's lots of moving parts in this district right now that are doing things that are going to improve these numbers. And I love the idea that that's happening, and, and we're taking best practices and applying them. And, and I know McKinley's doing a competency-based system where they end up, you know, the student doesn't get a good grade until they master that, that subject matter. And I think that is huge. And I don't know if all the schools are doing that or not, but I know McKinley's doing that. And that's made a world of difference. I know a lot of parents are upset, because they're used to seeing all As in middle school, and now they're seeing, you know, B-minuses and Cs. And I just think that that is another push in the right direction of, if, if they've mastered it, they can get, you know, move on, and the grade gets replaced, the prior grade gets replaced by the, the most current grade. So I'm not that familiar with it, but I do know it's, it's another positive move by this district.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd really call attention to what we did this evening, too, the Safari montage, and you were on their website. I'd encourage you to get on there. That is really some outstanding help that we're bringing into our system. And I appreciate Becky, wherever you are. She must have stepped out. That, that is really good material.
I just wanted to add to what you had said, Alan, that you're right, there are some things happening, and we are looking at that as a district on what we can do, you know, for some of that competency-based grading. And that's what we do at the elementary. And that's the neat piece, is that our families are, they understand that, they understand what's going on. But we need to obviously do some more investigation. We need to do some more informing our public, you know, those kinds of things before we go district-wide. But we are looking at that, for sure.
Great reports, Carla. I'm sure you look forward to coming tonight.
I always do. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
And student achievement. We just really couldn't be happier. We're very pleased with those results. So thank you very much. Paul, I'm not sure that we formally welcomed you to the executive table in the boardroom. Paul Hayes is manager of Learning Supports. Did I get that correct? And you've done outstanding work in the district for many years, so we're happy to have you join us every other Monday night. Dave, I'm, I'm very happy that you listened to our public and had a meeting at Johnson and, and pulled that item from the agenda. So thanks for doing that as well. Grab your calendars, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.